At 12 o'clock on the nose, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, I'll call the this work session to order today. We are hearing about potential six penny projects for with the Cheyenne, Greater Cheyenne Greenway. And Jeannie without, oh, as standard practice, there will not be questions taken from members of the public. Um, without further to do, Jeannie, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor Collins and members of City Council, Jeannie Vetter, Parks and Greenway Planning, Planning and Development Office. Thank you for letting me take some time out of your day today to tell you about all the great things that are happening on the Greater Cheyenne Greenway. If everyone is agreeable, I would like to go through the presentation and then invite the President of the Greenway Foundation, Mr. Jim Walter to speak to you on behalf of our request. And finally, both Theresa Moore and Jason Sanchez from Community Recreation and Events have joined the meeting today, and we would be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Jeannie, I think that'll be fine. So just to make sure I understand you, you want to go through the presentation and then take questions? Or are you okay with members of council asking questions as you go along? We generally leave that up to the presenter's preference.
Um, Councilman White, it's my preference to go through the presentation first.
Okay.
That's all right with everyone?
That's perfectly fine. Go ahead. Please proceed.
Okay. Well, before I start on the presentation, I wanted to take a moment to let everyone know how profoundly grateful I am to be part of the Greater Cheyenne Greenway efforts. I began this position about a year ago and have always used the Greenway system. But it wasn't until I started in the Greenway and Parks Planner capacity that I realized what a labor of love the system is for so many of Cheyenne citizens. I know many of the volunteers on our Greenway Advisory Committee and Foundation have been active for many years. And I've heard from many citizens over the last year about just how much the Greenway means to them. Especially in 2020, when we were all asked to socially distance, the Greenway is beloved and heavily used. 2021 will mark the 30th anniversary of the beginning of the Greater Cheyenne Greenway. The following will present some highlights, history and updates on recent current current and upcoming projects, as well as what is requested by the Greenway Advisory Committee for the Six Penny Ballot this coming November. The Greenway serves as a safe and accessible recreational corridor, a key component of the non-motorized transportation system. It's an open air science, ecology, history and health classroom for students of all ages and a vital public space which is integral in building sustainable, vibrant and healthy neighborhoods and a cohesive community. The Greater Cheyenne Greenway currently includes nearly 45 miles of 10-foot width Greenway trail, over 18 miles of eight-foot width multi-use path, 22 underpasses and four overpasses. The Greater Cheyenne Greenway includes incredible amenities due to significant volunteer efforts of both fundraising and labor over the last 30 years by members of the community. These amenities include art, educational and interpretive signage, wayfinding signage and mileage markers, playgrounds and fitness equipment, benches, bike racks and trash receptacles, lighting and bicycle repair stations. These amenities add up to a Greenway that offers something special for everyone. The idea for a Greenway path in the Greater Cheyenne area arose from a grassroots group called the Crow Creek Greenway Committee, which formed in 1990, the driving force behind getting the Greenway started. Thirty years later, and with the involvement of the City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, other governmental agencies, businesses, citizen volunteers and schools, Cheyenne boasts almost 45 miles of completed Greenway path with ongoing efforts for future connections as the city grows. The original Greenway development plan was adopted in 1992 with construction beginning at Martin Luther King Junior Park. The Greenway has grown significantly from its humble beginnings to a large and valuable system for the citizens of Cheyenne and Laramie County. Geographic equity is a driving factor in selecting projects. Both city planning and the Parks Division focus on providing a uniform level of service for pathways across the urban area. Currently, 90% of the Cheyenne community lives within a half mile of the trail. Other important factors in establishing project priorities are connectivity, bridging socio-economic divides, safe access to schools, parks and businesses, and opportunities for public-private partnership. Parade Magazine thinks our Greenway is pretty special, too. Cheyenne was included in the March 2020 edition of Glorious Greenways in Every State. Here's some construction highlights from 2019, 2020, which include the completion of the Powderhouse Connector, which was completed last spring. It's a point two miles and runs along the west side of Powderhouse, connecting the Point Greenway System at Gardena Drive to the Greenway along Story Boulevard. The Henderson Connector was completed last summer and is point three miles. This segment connects neighborhoods to the north to the existing Sun Valley Greenway to the south. Phase one of the Sweetgrass Greenway, a private-public partnership, was built last spring and adds 1.1 miles to the system. With the construction of the LCCC Sweetgrass Underpass this coming fall, it will connect to significant miles of existing Greenway at LCCC and further north. The Saddle Ridge US 30 Detour, a private-public partnership, was completed this winter. It is point one five miles and provides a safer crossing of Whitney Road for students attending Saddle Ridge Elementary and other users. Phase one of the Leeds-Cheyenne Business Parkway Greenway Project. This is a 1.4-mile Greenway segment built last fall from just east of Burlington Trail Road to east of Whitney Road on the north side of Campstool and will include significant tree planting. Future phases will ultimately run farther east and include a crossing at Christianson Road, past the Lowe's Distribution Facility, and then a long venture to connect to the county's Archer Facility. This project, as well as future plans, will be a private-public partnership with phases planned for the near future. The Christianson Road Greenway Segment was built last year as part of the city's Christianson Overpass Project. This segment represents an added 1.4 miles to the system and runs from US Highway 30 to just south of the UP Railroad tracks on the west side of Christianson Road. All things considered, we have added almost five miles to the system just in 2019 and 2020. I wanted to talk about some other highlights for the Greater Cheyenne Greenway in 2020. The High Plains Audubon Society did a bird count along the Dry Creek portion of the Greenway in late April. The slide shows only a few of the 50-plus colorful bird species the group counted. The Greenway is for wildlife, too. Two very successful Greenway adopt-a-spot cleanups were accomplished over two two-week periods in the spring and fall last year. I have to state again that Cheyenne has remarkable volunteerism for the Greenway as we have over 50 service groups that volunteer regularly for Greenway cleanup. The Cheyenne Greenway Foundation, a nonprofit established in 2008 to fund added amenities for the Greenway, held a successful annual 510K run-walk starting at Holiday Park on September 19th. Over the years, the foundation has secured private funding to purchase items such as benches, landscaping, public art, wayfinding signs, bicycle repair stations and much more. The first phase of the Greenway Wayfinding Plan was completed in September of last year. Nineteen wayfinding signs were placed in nine locations along the Greenway. Phase two will be accomplished this summer, and we have plans for multiple future phases. Thank you to the fundraising efforts of Leadership Cheyenne Class of 2018-19. The following are upcoming projects planned for 2021. The LCCC Sweetgrass Underpass will connect existing Greenway to the north to New Greenway within the Sweetgrass subdivision under East College Drive. This project has received a $500,000 TAP grant from the state of Wyoming, as well as an additional $200,000 commitment from YDOT and is planned to be under construction by the fall of this year. The Day Avenue Connector, which ties into the future downtown connector from Lincoln Way to Ames Avenue along Crow Creek, is currently under contract with construction to be completed by the end of July 2021. They actually are going to get started this coming Monday. The Cary Avenue Greenway will run along Cary Avenue, beginning at 8th Avenue to Kennedy Road, and then to existing Greenway on Central. The project, this project received a $400,000 TAP grant from the state of Wyoming. The project will significantly benefit users of both Lyons Park and Frontier Park. This project will likely be constructed in 2022. Sorry, everyone, I wasn't moving my slides.
It's quite all right. We know how it goes.
Okay, so this is the Day Avenue project. And this is what we're looking at for our multi-use or our path through Lyons Park. Um, the South Park Connector will connect existing Greenway located north of I-80 at the South Park subdivision to the Crow Creek Greenway along Walterside and Demming and will likely be constructed in the fall of next year. Fabrication and installation of the second phase of wayfinding signage is planned for this summer and will include 41 directional signs placed throughout the system. Finally, in more of a party than a project, the month of June will be filled with multiple Greenway events supported by the Greenway Advisory Committee, Greenway Foundation, 30th Anniversary Subcommittee and multiple other local sponsors and will include a bike safety rodeo on June 6th, the 12th Annual Spring Into Green on June 12th, and a 30th Anniversary Celebration scheduled for June 13th. The following projects have been made a priority by the Greenway Advisory Committee and future Six Penny Subcommittee after careful consideration. The following projects are respectfully submitted for inclusion on the Six Penny Ballot in November. The Greenway Fund should include some funding to allow for smaller projects such as the Walterside Connector that will be constructed with an engineering project intended to reconfigure at the intersection at Fox Farm in Walterside. The red portion in my screen is what we would try and get built. The city will be responsible for a portion of the proposed new US 30 underpass that YDOT has agreed to build as part of their US 30 reconstruction. The city will need to pay for a 10% match on construction of the underpass as well as full construction cost of the realigned trail portions that connect to the underpass. Completion of the downtown connector is an important connection for downtown and would include opening of the Pump House Wetlands area, crossing of the UP Railroad spur at Lincoln Way, and a marked shared bike and vehicle roadway along 15th Street to the Depot Plaza with ultimate connection to the underpass for Holiday Park. The Avenue's Airport Connector will make an important connection between existing Greenway at Evans Avenue to existing multi-use path on Airport Parkway. Years of effort have been put into this important connection that will provide a much safer route for users than using Persian Boulevard, which has very limited pedestrian bike width and high traffic volumes. We now have interest from Olivet Cemetery to provide an easement to place a portion of the project on their property. And discussions are resuming with the airport, the Airport Board and FAA to obtain access across airport property. The UPRR corridor connection will require a purchase of land and our easements, design efforts and possible construction to access the new East Cheyenne Community Park property from existing Greenway at Sun Valley Open Space. Finally, sufficient funding should be available as other public-private partnership opportunities and circumstances arise. We need to be able to take advantage of these opportunities as they represent good cost savings when incorporated into other city or private developer projects. The Greenway is well-used and is critical infrastructure. The Greenway has always been important infrastructure for the city as it dramatically improves the quality of life in Cheyenne. In 2021, the Greenway became seriously critical infrastructure during a pandemic. The Greenway allowed for physical activity and social distancing during a critical time of extreme anxiety and apprehension. I have to believe that access to the Greenway was very important for the mental health of many of our citizens. I sure know it was for me. In 2020, the city was lucky enough to have the Greenway Foundation donate significant funding for the purchase of trail counters along the Greenway. The counters are infrared and essentially sense and detect the infrared wavelengths that people emit. These counters were placed in 13 different areas of the Greenway from midsummer to late fall, and the numbers counted for users were significant. Just for an example, this slide shows an average daily count at the Dell Range and Converse Overpass of 276 users per day and at Mylar Park, 206 users per day on average. So I need to talk about Greenway maintenance. As was stated previously, Cheyenne Greenway currently includes 45 miles of 10-foot width Greenway trail, 18 miles of eight-foot width multi-use paths, 22 underpasses and four underpasses. A maintenance audit was completed by a local engineering firm in 2020. A summary of the findings ours follows. Adding detectable warning plates, ADA requirements, pavement markings and general crosswalk improvements at multiple street intersection crossings, drainage, erosion, slope stabilization and culvert maintenance in most areas near creeks, channel dredging and pump installation for flood control in multiple areas near creeks such as the US 30 and Ridge Road underpasses, repair of water infiltration at Yellowstone Underpass, pavement management, replacement and repair, installation, repair, painting of fencing and steel railings in multiple areas, erosion and foundation issues at several overpasses and bridges, lighting replacement for multiple underpasses, yearly railroad insurance costs, wayfinding signage and maintenance equipment, repair and replacement. Just a few examples include failing concrete in need of replacement and ongoing pump repair and flooding issues. Multiple areas with drainage and erosion control problems. Several older underpasses require replacement of damaged and obsolete lighting. Unfortunate but all-too-common vandalism and abuse throughout the system. Remember, the Greenway added almost five miles to the system in 2020 alone. The Greenway is for everyone: scouting troops and artists, school field trips, community events and service projects, runners and walkers, mountain bikers and farmers, solitary meditation and more community events, many, many volunteers, biking and running, school kids and family time. The Greenway is for everyone. I want to get into some budget info and funding mechanisms. The Greenway receives no money from the general fund. The Greater Cheyenne Greenway has received 13.9 million in public funding since its inception and has leveraged 4.6 million in federal, state and local grants over the years. More and more developers are understanding the importance of having the Greenway system connect to their developments. The Greenway, along with parks, are a valuable asset and a selling point for any residential development. The next Six Penny Election is scheduled to occur in November 2021. The Greenway is hoping to be included on this ballot for $6 million. If included and approved, 3.5 million is proposed for capital improvements, Greenway expansion, and 2.5 million for operations and maintenance as there is a significant amount of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. It's important for the Greenway Advisory Committee to be proactive. In 2012, the Greenway was left off the Six Penny Ballot, leaving it in a precarious financial situation for some time. When included on the ballot, it fares well. Greenway support gets positive percentages when it's on the ballot. It receives 60% support in 2003, 68% in 2008, 63% in 2017. If funding for the Greenway is not renewed, it will limit parks' ability to support it with equipment such as trucks, plows, trailers, mowers, attachments, string trimmers, maintenance supplies, stain paint, benches, trash receptacles, the list goes on and on. It would also end Greenway expansion and support of public events. The Greenway is a proven and beloved amenity for the citizens of Cheyenne. It no doubt supports economic development for the city and county as well. In this 30th anniversary year, it's important to make sure it continues to thrive and grow. It should serve as many citizens as possible, and we should see that it has provided the proactive maintenance it deserves. Thank you so much for your time and see you on the Greenway.
Thank you, Jeannie. You indicate, are you ready for questions or would you like Theresa and Jason to go?
Um, Councilman White, Jim Walter would like to-
Oh, sorry, I forgot. Yes, Jim. Thank you for being here today, Jim, and for all of your volunteer efforts with the Greenway. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman White. Mayor Collins, council members and staff, good afternoon. My name is Jim Walter. I live at 311 Annie Morgan Court over in Ward 1. I'm also a citizen member of the Greenway Advisory Committee and the President of the Cheyenne Greenway Foundation. I served for more than two years as the Initiative Leader for Action Item Number 2 on the Forward Greater Cheyenne Plan, which pushed to transform the Greenway. I also serve as the Vice President of Visit Cheyenne, Laramie County's Destination Marketing Organization. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the importance of including the Greenway in the next round of Six Penny Funding. The Forward Greater Cheyenne Project indicated the Greenway is and should be a defining attribute of our city and our county. Nearly 96% of city residents live within one mile of a Greenway segment. And that was before the construction that was completed over the last couple of years, so that number has risen. It's truly an asset to our community that all residents, no matter their socioeconomic status, can participate in for recreation, free, no cost to them outside of their continued support through the Six Penny Funding Mechanism. Action 2.3 in the Forward Greater Cheyenne Plan calls for continued expansion and connectivity of the Cheyenne Greenway, providing enhanced safe segments to the downtown area, west edge and new developments in the city. This was identified as a priority and has been a guiding principle as the Advisory Committee worked to put together this proposal. The continued development of the Reed Avenue Corridor will only enhance the walkability of our city. Connections to the Greenway will be important to make sure we realize the full potential of that corridor redevelopment. My daughter and I are heavy users of the Greenway. I run more than 500 miles a year along various segments of the trail. She rides her bike in a safe place where vehicle traffic is a much lower concern for her. We walk our dog, enjoy warm spring days and ride to downtown events along the Greenway. This shared community amenity is a major part of the amazing quality of life that we've come to embrace in Cheyenne. Like all infrastructure projects, the Greenway needs maintenance long-term. As you well know, in dealing with city streets, regular maintenance is much less expensive than major repairs and replacements. For that reason, I feel it's incredibly important to support the funding of the maintenance that has been included in this proposal. With nearly 45 miles of paved trail, cracks, leaks, broken sections and damage are part of the natural lifespan of the Greenway. Ensuring that the city has the funding and support to keep up with that maintenance log is essential to the continued viability of the system. For 30 years now, visitors and residents, young and old, have enjoyed our Greenway. As the city continues to grow to the east and the south, we need to make sure those residents have the opportunities to enjoy it as well. The support of the council and eventually the commissioners is greatly appreciated. We look forward to working hand-in-hand to continue to maintain, grow and enhance the Greater Cheyenne Greenway. Thank you very much for your time and efforts. I know you've got a big list of projects to go through and get to. We hope that you continue to support the Greenway as we grow Laramie County and the city of Cheyenne. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, and sorry about Syracuse.
Yeah, well, it's opening day of the baseball season, so there's a bright lining now.
Yep, there is. Opening day. Are there, thanks, Jim, are there questions? Jeannie, are we ready for questions or is this where Theresa and Jason speak?
Um, I think we're ready for questions.
Great. I'll start off. I've got a question, Jeannie, with regard to the downtown connector. What is the distance of that? When you showed the map earlier, that seemed, that seemed like a pretty significant distance from the depot to in the area that you had showed on the map.
Um, yeah, you know, I would have to get back with you on the exact mileage of that. But it is a significant distance getting from Ames Avenue Clearover to Holiday Park. A good portion of that connector, though, would be placed on 15th Street-
Right.
-as a shared bike and vehicle lane. The biggest complications with that one are crossing the UP, getting the Pump House Wetlands area opened, that kind of thing. But and then we have some kind of pavement rehab that would need to be done, especially on the eastern portion of 15th Street.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from my colleagues?
Counsel, President White, this is Dr. Aldridge.
Dr. Aldridge, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the background noise. I'm sitting in an airport right now, but I thank you so much, Jeannie, for your presentation. And through you, President White, to Jeannie and Theresa and Jason. My question is, is there a plan at some point to connect the Sun Valley area to the Dry Creek area on the Greenway that would work around the railroad tracks without going all the way out to Christianson Road?
Um, Councilman Aldridge, I could try and answer that for you. I'm trying to think, we're working on with this ask, we're working on making that connection from the Sun Valley Open Space to the new East Park property that we purchased. Much of that would depend on purchase of properties along that corridor and/or obtaining easements. Um, so, but you're speaking about connecting. Could you ask that question again?
Sure, that would be the area connecting the Sun Valley area closer to College Drive and to the Walmart off of College Drive versus going all the way out to Christianson Road.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. You know, the Metropolitan Planning Organization did 35% plans for that. And as my understanding is that they ultimately came up with some sort of a kind of a suspended bridge that could be attached to the existing bridge on College. There were a couple of options there.
There were a couple of options there. It would be a very important connector because now we're getting Greenway along Campstool. But we haven't addressed that one as it's really a fairly expensive project to do. I think when they looked into the, when they did the 35% plans, they also looked at an underpass. And, you know, if you ever wanted to come up to my office or have me come see you, I could show you that 35% plan set.
So the current proposed amount for the six penny ballot would not include anything in that area, is that correct?
Correct. It doesn't include that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Other questions?
President White, Tom Seagrave.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, a couple of quick questions. Any plans to take the Yellowstone section north, either along I-25 or up Yellowstone Road to Bar X and connected east to the new section on Powder House? Anything going north?
Councilman Seagrave, not at this time. There's been some discussions mainly about getting some Greenway out to our new national cemetery. But as it stands now, we've kind of got that Dry Creek connection that gets us up to the interstate at that overpass. And then you kind of have to get on street and then get on that on-street system farther up. So it didn't come up in our discussions as a priority, but there is talk of doing at least the connection somewhere up there to get us out to the new cemetery. Does that answer your question?
I'm not, I'm not sure how getting to the cemetery helps North Cheyenne.
Well, you know, and these discussions just come up with our Greenway Committee. We kind of start by throwing out some ideas and that kind of thing, and then some things rise to the top and other things kind of get, a priority is lowered on them. I would love to speak to you about your ideas, though.
All right. My second question, President White. Your downtown extension, does that include any money for the pump house itself?
Councilman Seagrave, yes, it does. I included that in our proposed costs. Right now, just keep in mind that those costs are an educated guess. I did have an engineer go through and take a good look. Depending on how long it takes, though, costs of building things just continue to rise. But I did include a significant amount to get that pump house wetlands open.
The building itself?
No, sir, not, not the building. Just the wetlands area, the fenced-in area. There's a lot of work that is yet to be done just to get that. There's an existing Greenway in there that we've had closed off for a couple of years because there's other problems on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Jeff, whenever, it's my turn.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so Jeff, I guess I have three questions. Jeannie, so on the Highway 30 underpass that's currently there, is part of your maintenance rehabilitation going to fix the pumps there since it's almost inaccessible for almost-
Yes, Councilman Johnson, we are currently working with engineering on fixing that. YDOT is not planning to rebuild US 30 until 2024, so that's a long time to wait. So engineering is working with a consultant to actually create a much better wet well at that site and fix that until YDOT does come in and literally move that underpass.
Okay, number two, so it's 6 million under the city. So are you guys doing a separate presentation for the low-impact trail that's supposed to go out to Archer? Is that a different thing or are you guys in communications with the county or is this something that we're looking to do joint? Or what's the plan on-
Councilman Johnson, that is not a project that we're proposing as one of our priority projects right now. A good portion of that project that will go out to Archer will be built privately between Leeds, Cheyenne Leeds, and then the owners of Campstool Land Company out there. And then we'll have to address a small section just getting, oh, it's probably within a mile of that overpass into Archer. We'll have to address that, but it isn't currently included in our priorities.
Okay, and then my last question is, so for the bicycle repair stations, the one that's currently at Sixth and Baldwin, or was it Sixth and Baldwin? Is that one going to be replaced? Because I know it used to be there and then last summer it disappeared. So did you guys pull those out to refurbish or what's the status on the bicycle repair station?
That bicycle repair station was vandalized pretty bad. And so we ordered some new parts and we moved it over closer to that trailhead. I would say it's just north of 12th Street, if you're familiar with that area. So it just got moved and we found that having it out so far away from people was probably not a good idea. So, so it's still there. It's just moved to the north, maybe quarter of a mile.
Okay, so it's north of 12th Street instead of south of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. One other question that I had, Jeannie. The proposed connector by the airport and then by the cemetery. My, I know that's been discussed for, for years. My understanding, a couple of years ago at least, it was, there were some obstacles that seemed pretty insurmountable regarding the airport and the FAA. Had those been resolved in order to, to get this, that particular connector on the, on the radar? Or, you know, how is that done?
Councilman White, I'm bringing up my screen again just so we can look at this and talk about it at the same time. Previously, what happened with this project is, can you see my cursor?
I can, yes.
Okay, there's a runway, an end of a runway right here, and I don't remember what the buffer distance was, but it's called a runway protection zone.
Right.
And so our Greenway was going to go right through that. That was a huge problem for the FAA. So just last year, I was approached by Olivet Cemetery to say that they would be happy to sell us an easement on their property to allow us to, because prior to that, we were on, we were on the school's property and then we were all on airport property. Now we're able to just go this area B on airport property, which avoids that RPZ zone, and then bump down onto all of that. So I've already been up to the airport and spoke to them a couple of times. I've had some staking done out there and I've submitted a submittal to the FAA. And I think with this potential for an easement, I think that we could easily, well, not easily, I think that we could get back on track.
Well, that's really good news, Jeannie, and thank you for your work on that. I, I kind of thought we were at an impasse on that, but pleased, very pleased to hear that, that there seems to be a solution. So, and just one more comment before I ask for further questions. Five miles may not sound like a lot to some folks, but adding five miles of, of Greenway just over the last year, year and a half, I think is pretty darn significant when you think of the grand, the grand scheme. So, great job. Any other questions from my colleagues? Dr. Rini, Mr. Roybal. What?
No questions.
Okay, great. If there are no other questions, did Jason and Teresa have any comments?
Great job, Jeannie, on the presentation and we're here for questions from you, if you have any.
I guess I just have one more question, either Jeannie or Jason. Some constituents have approached me and asked whether or not lighting is an option. And one gentleman in particular mentioned to me, he is, he's, lives here now, he's from out of state, but the Greenway where he used to live, used to have some lighting on the, on the sides of their Greenway, and they were solar, so they, which cut down on, on the, on the cost and kind of seemed like an innovative idea. Has any, anything like that ever been considered or, you know, I just, just didn't know kind of if, if any lighting options had ever been considered in order to make the Greenway more viable in the, in the evening hours, I guess.
Um, you know, this is Jeannie Better. I think that might be better answered by Jason. I, you know, I've only been here a year and I don't know if we have approached that, tried to do that prior other than just in the underpasses.
Councilman White, Jason Sanchez.
The underpasses are well, well lit, so.
Correct. To my knowledge, Councilman White, the underpasses are the only areas that we've explored. Lighting, to my knowledge, and I've been with the department for quite a few years, lighting along the trail has not been explored.
Great. Thanks, thanks for, thanks for answering that, Jason. Any other questions before we adjourn? Well, I guess, I guess there is none. I just want to thank you, Jeannie, for a great presentation. I, I think many of us on council recognize the importance of the Greenway, not just for our citizens and those we represent, but I think it's also a very important recruiting tool when organizations like Leeds go out and approach businesses. I, I think the Greenway is really one of the things that, that makes our community very attractive to, to new businesses and just, just want to get that on the record. So if there are no other questions, we'll adjourn this work session and thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.